I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Brew Baker.
Here.
Lucas.
Here.
Jeffrey.
Here.
Kaiser.
Here.
Kimmons.
Here.
Excuse me, if there's anyone here that would like to address the council, please fill out a green card located in the foyer and present it to the clerk. And you will have four minutes to address the council at the appropriate time. Everyone received a copy of the agenda? Are there any corrections or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, I ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second? There's a motion, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Passes. The minutes, you should have received a copy of the minutes from the last meeting. Are there any corrections or changes to the minutes of the last council meeting in your packets? Hearing none, I ask for a motion to approve the minutes from the last council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Minutes approved. Next, we have, uh, excuse me, recognition of visitors, Mr. Crane.
None at this time, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Communication requests, informational items, uh, we do have receipt of bids, number two.
Yes, mayor, we received bids for nine-one-one call reports from Z-tron and ECATs, and we're recommending going forward with ECATs, and we ask that these bids be accepted.
Okay, is there any, uh, questions, discussion? If not, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That bid is accepted. Number three.
Yes, mayor, we received bids for body worn cameras, we received three bids from Axon, Lenslock, and Motorola, and we're recommending moving forward with Axon, we ask that these bids be accepted.
Okay, any questions, discussion on this one? Hearing none, uh, do I have a motion to approve this one?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That bid is accepted. Number four.
Yes, mayor, we received bids for in-car cameras, we received them from Axon, Lenslock, and Motorola, and we're recommending moving forward with Axon, we ask that these bids be accepted.
Okay, once again, any questions, discussion? If not, do I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That, that bid is accepted. Next is a consent agenda. In reviewing that, is there any item there you would like to, uh, exclude from the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion for the reading of the consent agenda?
Second.
A motion, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. First reading.
Resolution R one four eight two, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a sales term and conditions agreement with Axon Enterprises, Inc., for the purchase of police body worn cameras and support. Resolution R one four eight three, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a sales agreement with Axon Enterprises, Inc. for the purchase of police vehicle in-car cameras. Resolution R one four eight four, a resolution authorizing single source purchase from Wireless USA for installation, installation of fiber optic phone lines. Resolution R one four eight five, a resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase agreement with Entrado Life and Safety Solutions Corporation for ECATS nine-one-one equipment. Resolution R one four eight six, a resolution approving a RFP submitted by Mark Twain Regional Council of Governments for Professional Administrative Services for the Fennel Community Revitalization Grant, the Industrial Site Grant, and the WABASH Hype Grant Program Projects.
Okay, that was the, uh, first and only reading, is there any, uh, discussion or questions regarding the consent agenda? If not, do I have a motion for the approval?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Consent agenda is approved. Next, under ordinance, resolutions, number ten.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance authorizing and approving an amendment to the budget for the city of Mobley, Missouri, asks to be read twice for consideration.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second, first reading please. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The reading of the ordinance is approved, first reading please.
An ordinance authorizing and approving an amendment to the budget for the city of Mobley, Missouri, previously adopted for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-two, to June thirty, twenty twenty-three.
Is there any further discussion? Second reading please.
An ordinance authorizing and approving an amendment to the budget for the city of Mobley, Missouri, previously adopted for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-two, to June thirty, twenty twenty-three.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, roll call please.
Brew Baker.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes.
Kaiser.
Yes.
Kimmons.
That ordinance is approved. Number eleven.
Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance authorizing and approving the budget for the city of Mobley, Missouri, for the fiscal year July first, twenty twenty-three, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, asks for it to be read twice for consideration.
We have a motion for the reading, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. First reading please.
An ordinance authorizing and approving the budget for the city of Mobley, Missouri, for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-three, to June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, second reading please.
An ordinance authorizing and approving the budget for the city of Mobley, Missouri, for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-three, to June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, roll call please.
Brew Baker.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes.
Kaiser.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
That ordinance is passes. Number twelve.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance amending sections forty-eight hundred and forty-eight oh two relating to recreational off-by, off-highway vehicles and golf carts. I ask that it be read twice for consideration of passage.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the reading? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? First reading please.
An ordinance amending sections forty-eight hundred and forty-eight oh two relating to recreational off-high, off-highway vehicles and golf carts.
Any further discussion? Second reading please.
An ordinance amending sections forty-eight hundred and forty-eight oh two relating to recreational off-highway vehicles and golf carts.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second, roll call please.
Brew Baker.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes.
Kaiser.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
Ordinance is passed. Number thirteen, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution ratifying the execution of professional services, task order number eighty with McClure Engineering Company, asks that it be read once for consideration of passage.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? First and only reading.
A resolution ratifying the execution of professional services, task order number eighty, with McClure Engineering Company.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Resolutions passed. Number fourteen.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager of Mobley, Missouri to execute an agreement with Vendor Registry, Inc., asks to be read once for consideration.
Okay, we have a motion for the reading, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all those in favor of the reading say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? First and only reading.
A resolution authorizing the city manager of Mobley, Missouri to execute an agreement with Vendor Registry, Inc. powered by MDF Commerce to provide bid and contract management software.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Resolution is passed. Number fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution appointing Matthew Douglas as city treasurer and accepting the appointment by the city manager of Matthew Douglas as city collector and asks for it to be read once for consideration.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? First and only reading.
A resolution appointing Matthew Douglas as city treasurer and accepting the appointment by the city manager of Matthew Douglas as city collector.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Resolutions passed. Number sixteen.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution accepting the emergency purchase of three police vehicles in the total amount of a hundred and seven thousand five hundred and eight dollars from Mobley Motors, and I ask that it be read once for consideration of passage.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second of the first and only reading. First reading please, first and only reading please.
A resolution accepting the emergency purchase of three police vehicles in the total amount of one hundred seven thousand five hundred eight dollars from Mobley Motors.
Any further discussion? Mr. Jeffrey.
So I think this would be Mr. Crane, but I'm looking at the, the rule that you included in here in the packet about ten calendar days of the expenditure, so is the reason this is up right now is because the expenditure was made ten days ago?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I need to know, thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second? I hear a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? That resolution passes. Anything else to come before the council?
Missed one.
Did I miss one? Oh, I'm sorry, yes. That's a very important one. Number seventeen.
Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the city of Mobley, Missouri to pay expenses due between June sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, and June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-one cents. Ask that it be read once for consideration of passage.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? First and only reading.
A resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the city of Mobley, Missouri to pay expenses due between June sixteen, two thousand twenty-three, and June twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-one cents.
Okay, I hereby certify that there is sufficient money standing to the credit of the city of Mobley, Missouri, unappropriated in the funds identified in this resolution to meet the requirements of this resolution. City Treasurer Gregory L. Hodge. Although, do I have a motion for approval, excuse me?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? That resolution passes, that's approved. Now, anything else to come before the council?
Yes, mayor, we have three appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, we had six applications on file with the recommendation to move those forward with Byland, Scoobic, and Tadres.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do I need to nom, someone need to nominate these first, or?
That's what we did last.
That's what we did last. We moved forward three names.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of, uh, Sam Tadres, Mike Scooby, and David Byland. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? So those three will be appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Number nineteen.
Mayor and council, we've received liquor applications from Los Amigos, Lula Tonight, under a new owner, Lucky's Vertigo Event Services, and Express Liquor and Smoke, number fourteen. These have gone through the appropriate departments, and we do recommend approval.
Okay, any, any, uh, do we have a motion for approval on that?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? First and only reading? Or is that it?
That's it.
That's it, okay, that's approved, thank you. And we're down to, uh, if anyone here is here to address the council, please step forward, give your card to the clerk, and state your name and address for the record. You will have four minutes to address the council.
Good evening, my name is Shonda Comer, I live at four fourteen Vinsel, Mobley, Missouri. I'm here with my granddaughter for an incident that's occurred here in Mobley with pedestrians, or pedestrian lights at each intersections. On Morley and Franklin Avenue, to get across, you only have four point zero three seconds from the time the light, the pedestrian light comes on, to the time the stop hand comes on, you know, it goes to the stop hand. That's four point zero, zero three seconds at Morley and Franklin, a block from the school. On Morley and Coates is six point six nine seconds. Again, a block from the school, alternative school. We cannot make it across the road in six point six nine seconds. We walk, bike, and enjoy the things in our community. And safely, I would like to see about trying to get that changed to where we could extend that time a little bit. If you, you know, want to take the time to walk it, or time yourselves on how far it takes, or how far you get in six point six nine seconds. I'd really like that because we, she wasn't even across, I was to the middle of the intersection, and she wasn't even crossed before someone was coming off of Coates Street making a turn to Morley Street to go north Morley. So, this is something that needs to be addressed and possibly changed, or see what we can do.
Okay, we can look into that, I don't, I don't know, is that, uh, Mr. Crane, is that MoDOT that coordinates that?
Typically on Morley, yes.
That's what I was thinking.
We'll definitely reach out to them and see what we can do.
Yeah, we can get in touch with MoDOT and see if we can get that extended.
All right, we really appreciate it, and this is, uh, I, uh, kind of put a phone.
Thank you.
That's what we planned out for that. But, that's all I have.
Okay.
That, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much, bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening to address the city council? Seeing none, uh, is there a motion to adjourn to work session?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? We adjourn to work session. Oh, roll call, thank you.
No.
No.
So anyway, uh, we're adjourned to work session. Well, you only did it seven years, I mean. It's bound to happen, make a mistake once in a while.
But we usually get closed session, that's what it's about.
Yeah.
Don't make that mistake again.
Okay. I open up this, uh, work session. Which I gotta get to, right screen here. I apologize. First one is a discussion regarding a hay harvest agreement between the city of Mobley, Missouri, and promoting the city wastewater treatment plant, BioSolids land application site, and authorizing the city manager to sign the agreement.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
This is the first year for the newly improved BioSolids land application site of the wastewater treatment plant. Staff can now apply BioSolids to all available acres of the site. The site has been seeded with the initial crop, there's a follow-up crop that's coming. And I apologize, I don't have all the details on exactly what went in and the timing, et cetera, but, we would have liked to have had more rain this year, but the crop is fairly thin. Tony Boone, our consultant, contacted various farmers to see if he could get proposals for someone to come in and cut and harvest the hay that's there, and that we can do a nutritional analysis on that hay. This is a one-year agreement. We expect to have no less than one cutting, and perhaps two, if weather permits, before the growing season is over. Next year, we expect to be in front of this body with a multi-year agreement with the data that was gathered from this year's efforts. And I'm happy to address any questions.
Mr. Jeffrey.
I understand what you're talking about with the, uh, lack of rain, which will affect the cutting, but I would suggest when you go next year that we use another method to determine the farmers to bid on it, because there were not, uh, that I could see any of the, the farmers in that area that I know are big hay harvesters on that list. So, uh, we need to go a different route as far as coming up with a list to, uh, ask for bids.
To choose a different methodology.
But, yeah, not just something from the, uh, government office, I think we're gonna have to develop our own list, or not use Boone Consulting, because you don't have a lot of the names of the folks that live right out there that would be interested, and I talked with several of them, they didn't get contacted. They didn't, they didn't get a bid, a request for bid back, or anything like that, so. It's not as attractive this year, I think we'll just, we should, I think, try to do it a little different next year.
Very good, we'd be happy to do that. I did have a gentleman contact me today, and I put him in touch with Tony Boone, but we can choose a different methodology to generate a list of contacts.
Yeah. Okay, any other?
As I said, the mayor's right, there's nobody on this list that lives remotely close to, and there's a number of people that live right by there, so.
Any other discussion? Have any problem moving this one forward? Okay, we'll move this forward to the next council meeting. Next, number two, a discussion regarding accepting a permanent water and sewer line easement for the Wright Legacy German Sewer Project.
This is a project that has, how do I word this? That has been desired for at least twenty years, and this will take the German property off of an onsite. off of an onsite treatment system and connect it to the city sewer, which is the goal for every property within Mobley. And it will also, it's also designed to address any future development that comes in that general area by allowing gravity flow to that same line. We, we've been after this easement for quite, quite some time, like I said, and we were finally able to obtain it.
Okay, any questions, discussion? Anyone have any problems moving this forward? Hearing none, we'll move that to the next city council meeting. Number three, a discussion regarding accepting the bid and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement for a Morley Pump Station and Force Main EDA project for public utilities.
This is the contract award to ESS for the Morley Pump Station and Force Main Project. It's one of the six EDA projects. ESS was not the lowest bidder, but the lowest bidder was unable to demonstrate minimum qualifications for the project. EDA vetted that review as well, so we moved forward with ESS, the second highest bidder, and we're prepared to award the contract to that.
Okay, any questions or discussion? Have any problems moving this one forward?
Nope.
Next city council meeting, okay, this one will be moved forward to the next city council. Number four, request to have the addition of N and S prefix to all necessary College Avenue addresses.
Mayor, this was a, uh, request from some citizens that are having problems with, uh, mail delivery on College Avenue, so we're recommending putting the north and south prefix on those blocks to distinguish between the, the street.
So the north and south, would, would Rollins be the cutoff between the north and south?
Everything north of Rollins is north.
Right.
College, everything south of, uh, Rollins on College, it's hard to read up there. But there's an exhibit in the packet that showed that.
So isn't there just one house north?
Yeah, and I think, is that the house that's having the problem?
Oh.
No, there's several houses north.
The memo said one house. I think it's the ones that's actually north of, uh, Reed that are having a problem.
Okay, I guess there's some houses there I didn't realize had a College Avenue address.
Add in to Fisk as part.
Yeah, if you see it up there, those apartments all the way up there are technically on College.
Are they on College? That's right.
Going north, I'd. So anyway, any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, that process that I read was that we'll bring a resolution to you next council meeting, then that resolution is published in the paper for a comment by people on the street, and then we bring an ordinance to approving the change in name.
Okay, sounds like a simple process there. Okay. Everyone okay moving that one forward to next city council meeting? So we'll move that one forward. Number five, request for approving a resolution authorizing the Mobley Fire Department to submit a grant application through the Emergency Management Performance Grant Direct Assistance Program.
Yes, Mayor, this is a annual, uh, authorization that we use for the Emergency Management Performance Grant to help fund our emergency management director, which is housed in our fire department.
Okay, any discussion or questions? Everyone okay moving this one forward? Okay, we'll move, uh, number five forward to the next city council meeting. Number six, discussion of an agreement between WSKF and city of Mobley for joint communication renovation.
Yes, Mayor, this is in agreement with the architect firm that's gonna assist in, uh, the joint communication expansion project that was identified last year. WSKF's also working on the new, uh, fire station, and, uh, this expands that scope to include the remodel of the existing nine-one-one center.
Okay. Any questions, discussion on this? Does this also cover the, uh, the existing number one fire station and the police station, the remodel?
Not specifically, we're, we're waiting to see how this one shakes out, to see what is gonna be left of the budget, to see what that scope is gonna look like.
Okay.
Uh, the good news is, you know, the, the council designated about five hundred thousand dollars of that budget to the nine-one-one and station project, and, um, after touring it with the, uh, police chief and the architects, it looks like we, we think we can expand the nine-one-one center where it's at relatively inexpensive, so we think there's gonna be, uh, some funds available to, to do some improvements at, at what will be old station one.
It'd be good, yeah. Any questions? Discussion? Everyone okay moving this one forward? Okay, we'll move this to the next city council meeting. And that's all I have for the work session. Mr. Kaiser?
I just have one thing, and I, um, as we know downtown, we've been experiencing some issues with kids and so on. I just wanted to thank the chief, because I've noticed an increase in patrolling, uh, both during the day and in the evening, uh, just want to say thank you, uh, that it's been noticed.
Okay. Anything else? If not, is there a motion to adjourn the work session?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? We adjourn.